Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside Council to order. We have everybody here tonight, full quorum. I'd ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation. Good evening. Would you bow your heads with me if you are so inclined? God, light of love, Creator of the heavens and the earth and all things that reside in both. We ask for your blessings upon this meeting. As our population increases on the mountain during the summer months, we ask that you would protect and keep our citizens safe, and that you would watch over all of our government service employees, healthcare professionals, and local business owners. We give you thanks for our elected officials and for their willingness to seek the best interests of all persons within the cities of Pinetop and Lakeside. Would you give our mayor, council members, and all persons gathered here tonight wisdom and open minds to listen to each other well as we progress through the agenda before us? We also ask that you would nourish our land with much-needed rain, and that you would protect our cities and our surrounding area from fires. Grant us continued goodness and peace. Amen. Thank you. Item C on our agenda tonight is called to the public. This is the business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council and not members, not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter for further discussion and reschedule at a later date. Items on the agenda are not heard and called to the public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. I don't see anybody tonight, so we will move on then to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a member of council requests that an item or item be removed for discussion. Questions may be answered without removal. All items, excuse me, items removed are considered in their normal sequence as listed unless called out of sequence. As you can see, we have three items on our consent agenda tonight.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item. After the subject has been announced- By the mayor and explained by- Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item, either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 tonight is introduction of our new animal control code enforcement officer, Chelsea Haas. Welcome, Chief Barnes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Thank you. I just want to introduce our newest member of the police department, Chelsea Haas. She's our new code enforcement and animal control officer. And she comes to us with quite a bit of experience in law enforcement, in dispatching. She has experience in the EMS world and education in animal behavior. So she's really hit the ground running in this new job and is doing a fantastic job for us. I'm not sure if she wants to give a big speech or not, but-
You can tell us a little bit about yourself, though, Chelsea, if you don't mind.
Sure. I just relocated back here with my husband after we did a stint in the military. And I've always served the community and couldn't wait to start again. And when I met the chief and all them at my job interview, fell in love with the town. So been here since and can't wait to keep doing it.
We're hearing wonderful things. We really appreciate your service. And whatever we can do to help make your job easier, we're there for you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming tonight, Chelsea. Item D2 is a presentation and update regarding the bond sale. Nick Dodd, welcome tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. As a reminder, my name is Nick Dodd. I'm with Piper Sandler. And here to give a brief update on how the bond sale ended up going about two weeks ago now. We sold the bonds. And so, as you know, we've been talking about potentially selling bonds for both the public safety facility and the potential prepayment of the town's PS/PRS liability for about almost 10 months now. I think the first meeting was in August of last summer. And we've had a lot of discussion, council workshops. And so I'm here today hopefully with some really good news. And I'm sorry, Jill, which button do I hit? Scroll. There we go. You'd think I'd remember with the remote control. So this evening, I was going to provide just a real quick update on the bond market and give you guys an update on where interest rates are and how the markets are performing. Talk real quickly about other communities within the state who are pre-funding their PS/PRS liabilities, just to give you a sense for other jurisdictions that have done this as well. And then we're going to look specifically at your two series of bonds. As you know, there was the tax-exempt series, which funded the public safety facility, and the taxable series, which funded the PS/PRS prepayment. And we're going to kind of compare and contrast what we were forecasting and we had discussed in prior council meetings with regards, and then compare that to how the bond sale actually ended up working out. So where's the market today? Obviously, as you know, the economy continues to recover from the pandemic. The economic situation in the United States is actually pretty good. We're starting to hear worries and concerns about inflation. Inflation means interest rates would possibly rise. There's a lot of talk around, you know, kind of government spending, and people are concerned about that. You know, the stock market's at or near all-time highs. However, interest rates remain pretty low, and the forecasts are that they'll remain low, at least through, you know, the end of this year. And the tax-exempt market in particular, which is probably the most relevant to local cities and towns such as Pinetop, has performed very well throughout the year. Investor demand is strong, and we've seen very good reception for bonds as they come to market. Specifically looking at interest rates, this is a chart that I've probably shared with the council or members of staff at multiple times over the last six to eight months. This tracks interest rates over a very long period of time, really over the last decade. And you can see there's generally been a downward trend with what looks like probably some heart attacks along the way. Those were different economic or political crises that happened in the country over the last 10 years. The most recent and probably relevant one was in early 2020 when COVID hit. And that's where you can see on the right-hand side of the lower chart, that red line, which just absolutely spikes up, and that was when COVID hit. And investors thought, oh, my gosh, local governments are going to default, and it's going to be terrible. And so for local governments, the tax-exempt market almost froze up and completely shut down for about six weeks. And then what happened, and I think Pinetop has been a great example of this, is people still figured out how to do takeout, and they stayed home and spent local. And governments continued to perform and provide services. And local government is probably the most, you know, crucial during this last year, year and a half, because you've continued to provide those services and that people have come to expect. And you've seen actually growth in your revenues in a lot of cases. And obviously, the federal government's helped out with some of the stimulus funding they've provided. And so investors really quickly kind of wrap their brains around, okay, we're going to be okay. And then if you blow up in the top right-hand part of this chart, that really shows interest rates in a more narrow timeframe over the last, you know, really 12 to 18 months. And you can see, they've been pretty steady. We did have a little bit of an uptick in interest rates, but generally speaking, interest rates throughout this year have remained pretty calm and stable. And that was, we were fortunate for that. And as we had been working with town staff, we had tried to use conservative estimates with regards to where we thought the bond sale would, you know, come to market, recognizing in August of 2020, when we knew we weren't going to be selling bonds until potentially May of 2021, you kind of have to balance, there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of things could happen during that time period. So we took a fairly conservative approach with regards to our interest rate assumptions. And I think you'll see that in the final results. So now I just wanted to, real quickly, you know, I think in February when we spoke, I shared with you a list of municipalities within Arizona who had pre-funded their PS/PRS liability. And at the time, there was probably only about six or seven, probably through City of Tucson, who had actually completed a financing when we met in February. And that was when you guys approved the bond issue. You can see since then, about nine other, nine or 10 other jurisdictions have pre-funded their liabilities. And at this point, and what's not on this list because they just priced the bonds yesterday, was City of Kingman sold about $35 million in bonds. So they would now be on the list as well. And so now you have all of these jurisdictions, and it totals over $1.5 billion in municipalities who have pre-funded their PS/PRS liabilities. And in almost all cases, everyone was under 3%. And we'll talk a little bit about this, but remember, your liability with PS/PRS was accruing at 7.3%, because that's the actuarial assumed rate. And so as you'll see in the presentation, you guys came in under 3% as well. And so you're not alone, if that gives you comfort. But I really do think, and the other thing I would just mention, and we can talk more about this in a second, is you also now have a clear path forward with budget stability. And you know what your payments are associated with the UAL or that pension. And you can plan, you know, around that and build budgets that you don't have to worry about a rapidly increasing UAL. And obviously, a number of other cities and towns around the state have realized that as well. So let's talk a little bit about the bond sale results. So when we met, and over, like I said, the last six to eight months, you know, we've tried to pick a few statistics that would kind of resonate and kind of bullet points that you guys could look at. So this is actually a page from a presentation in February. I didn't change any of the statistics. I just wanted to kind of have this be a refresher, and then we'll compare. So we've always talked about that for the public safety facility, which was the tax-exempt bonds, there would be a 27-year final maturity paid off through July 1 of 2047. We had estimated that over that time period, you would pay $1.7 million in interest in addition to the $3 million you borrowed for the facility, and that your payments were estimated to be $170,000 a year, and that the interest rate we were estimating was 2.9%. And remember, this is tax-exempt, so investors will accept a slightly lower interest rate because they don't pay taxes to both the federal government and the state on the interest they earn on that investment. So your actual results, we stayed with the 27-year maturity schedule or final payment, and that was consistent. So on the prior page, we had been projecting $1.7 million in interest. The actual interest that will be paid over that 27-year time period is 1.17, so that's a 30% reduction in your interest cost. Your payment went down from $170,000 to $155,000, and the actual borrowing cost or blended interest rate was 2.27. And that compares to 2.89, which was our forecast. So, you know, very favorable funding on the interest rates there. So congratulations, and we were obviously very happy with the results. If we now turn our attention to the 2021 Bs, these were the taxable bonds. So the big difference is the investors in these bonds have to pay, they don't pay state income taxes on the interest they earn, but they do pay federal taxes. And so obviously, because if you pay federal taxes, you might pay 25 or 30%. So you're going to require a slightly higher interest rate to invest in these types of bonds. So once again, we were matching off your debt service on the bonds with what the projected payments were with PS/PRS. And remember, in 2017, PS/PRS gave the town an option to extend to the 30-year amortization. So that's where the 2047 comes from. So we matched off the debt service on the bonds with the PS/PRS liability. We were projecting that you would pay $3.7 million in interest during that 27-year period on the bonds. Your payments were projected to be just a little over $400,000, and that the interest rate was estimated to be 3.59%. So if you remember where we were projecting the tax exempts was about 2.9. This was 3.6, and so that, you know, 60 to 70 basis point difference, that's a pretty standard difference between a tax-exempt and a taxable rate. At the time, based on those estimates we had projected, and this was pretty consistent throughout the eight months we talked about this, that the town would save approximately $8.5 million compared to if you did nothing and just paid the PS/PRS liability at their 7.3%. So if we now look at how the bond sale went, payment terms stayed the same. Your interest, total interest paid is at 2.9 million. And so that's a 20% reduction. The debt service payments on an annualized basis or annual debt service and its level for the entire time period is $370,000, so that's down from the $407,000. And your interest rate came in on a blended basis, right under 3% at 2.97%. And obviously, because these results are more favorable, the projected savings over the 27-year time period when compared to what you would have paid to PS/PRS increased from the $8 million to the $9 million, $250,000 is kind of the forecasted. And I want to be careful. We've talked a lot about this. Those savings are projected based on what PS/PRS forecasted your UAL payments to be during that 27-year time period. And there's a lot of assumptions that are embedded in that. But what you guys know for sure is you have a payment of $370,000 to pay off that debt. And you will go to 100% funded status. You'll actually, we actually overfunded by about $350,000 your pension liability. We talked with PS/PRS, we had calls with them. And you essentially have a reserve with them so that to the extent their investment return didn't, you know, meet what was expected, you have a cushion there. And one of the reasons we did that is because the rates were coming in so favorable. We had a little bit of cushion there to still come in under where we were projecting, the interest rates, the annual payments, and give you guys some cushion. So hopefully, knock on wood, you'll never have an unfunded liability on your PS/PRS liability again. And we've spoken with PS/PRS. On July 1, when you pay down that liability and pay it off, they will stop. And all you'll have to make is your current normal costs. So just the normal, it's about 13%, 12 to 13%, just like you would in AS/RS, you know, employee. And so all of the big payments associated with the UAL will go away. And so we felt really good about this result. A little bit just about the bond sale, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. Keith knows. He was watching the sale. It was a little slow that morning. Right out of the gate, we got one order from Cincinnati Insurance Company. And then it was kind of, you know, just slow. And we had some people we were talking to, and, you know, I think people were just kind of, and Keith knows this, we talked a lot about it throughout the week. That week was probably the busiest week in the year for Arizona bonds to come to market. We had over 10 different issuers come to market that week, over $600 million. City of Phoenix brought a big $300 million deal. There was a number of other bond issues in the market. And so it kind of felt like there was a little bit of investor fatigue at the end of the week. We priced on a Thursday. And so it was a little slower than we had hoped. But by the end of the sale, we had attracted six or seven different investors through the two different series of bonds. And then our firm went at risk and underwrote a little over $1 million of the bonds, which was about 15% without any investors, you know, willing to buy the bonds. And when you are an underwriter, that's what we do. We, that's a risk transfer that occurred on the day of pricing. Your interest rates were locked, and we took that risk. And then it's up to us to find investors, you know, in the days and weeks after the pricing. We have since sold most of the bonds, and will obviously continue to make a market. If any of the investors who bought the bonds from us ever wanted to sell them back to us, we would gladly buy them and then find other investors. So at the end of the day, a very good result. I'm certainly happy with the outcome. I think the town's, you know, I credit staff for, you know, really thinking through this and engaging with the mayor early on, and then all of the council. And you guys went through a very deliberate process to kind of conclude you felt like this was the right thing. And I think, as you saw from the slide with other jurisdictions around Arizona, other people are figuring it out too, so you're not the only ones. And the results we're certainly very happy with. So I'll stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions of the council or if staff has anything else to add.
Any questions for Nick?
First of all, thanks for stepping up. Million and a half, you know, we appreciate that. Has the market gone down since we bought it, or has it gone up a little bit since we sold them?
Right. So in general, if you ever want to watch interest rates and be really bored like an investment banker like I am, you can watch the 10-year Treasury. That's the best gauge of interest rates in the United States at least. And really, for the last three months, the 10-year Treasury has ranged from 155 on the low end to 170 on the high end. So that's 15 basis points. So that's pretty narrow. And if I can find my phone today, we were in the 158 to 160 range when we priced the bonds for the town. And this morning, I have it on my phone because I'm a bond guy, it closed at a 1.625. So you can, I mean, we're within a couple of basis points of where we were when the-
Hasn't changed much.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you for all the efforts that you've put into this, Nick. And thank you, Keith, and Kevin's not here, but I know you guys spent a lot of time on this one too. I think it's going to be good for the Town of Pinetop Lakeside.
Mayor Irwin, if I could just throw in, and, you know, I'd like to thank Nick and all the players and partners in his firm for their, not only for their professional, everything that they bring to the table in a very professional manner. And by doing that, they bring confidence with each of their customers. And we truly appreciate all that they've done. And it's not just the firm. There's other players, law firms, and everybody else that's looking at everything. And, you know, and I'll tell you what, and I said, Matt and I were sitting there watching this, and it was kind of like watching, you know, when the clock started for 30 minutes. It was like watching a pot of water and waiting for it to boil, because nothing was happening. And so we go, okay, any minute now. And right at the tail end, a flurry of activity happened. But then the cool thing, an amazing thing, was the work that they did behind the scenes that we really didn't know, except for what they were describing, to work with potential investors. And some of the work that they did benefited, the changes that they made benefited the purchasers of those bonds, but also in the end benefited us a little bit further. So, you know, it's just of my understanding of how this market works, and so I'm grateful for these professionals and being able to have the opportunity to work with Nick.
Thank you.
And Kevin would say nearly the same thing.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on then to item D3, which is consideration of Resolution Number 21-1580, approving a three-year extension to the agreement for town attorney services with Sims, Matkin, LTD, and authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the town. Keith?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Smith, and Council. For the past few years, the, every year, the agreement with Bill Sims comes back before you for reapproval. Nothing has changed, except in this contract, except for the length of the term. And so, you know, it's easy to forget, year to year, to run back and get this thing approved and bring it back before the council. So we proposed in our discussions with him to extend the term to three years rather than one year. Now, about the time that this term, this contract or agreement ends, Bill will probably retire. And that's his, that's his end game. And so, in fact, I think I was trying to aim for a five-year agreement, and we pulled it back to three. So, and he's grooming a member of his, one of his partners to be able to take his place in the future. So, again, the only thing that changed on this, the rates are still the same, no increases, just the length of the term for three years.
Any questions for Keith?
I have a question. And I have no qualms about Bill Sims. I mean, he instructed us, when I did my instruction here a few months ago on things, to do a good job. I just wonder, though, I mean, we have a park dedicated in honor of a former local attorney who served as the town attorney. And we put up banners saying "Buy Local", yet we outsource our legal counsel, I guess. Are there not competent attorneys here locally who, and maybe we have. Have we given them an opportunity to- to work for the town? I don't know. I guess that's, I just-
That's a good question. You got-
I mean, we, you know, we try to keep things local and try to promote things locally here. And I would think there would be competent attorneys, especially knowing, hearing now that Bill Sims is going to retire in three years. I mean, I know he specializes in this area. But, I mean, are there not competent attorneys here locally who could also fill that?
Sure. And, you know, and so the original agreement, and going back to Mr. Barker, as I recall, there was a period where Mr. Barker was a full-time attorney for the town. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, he was never a town employee. He was always a contract service.
Oh, okay. Because we used to spend like a quarter of a million dollars a year on attorney services because we had somebody, whether contract or not.
We did. We had two in-house attorneys over the past years. I realized that was not-
Yeah.
Or necessary.
So, you know, they put this out to bid several years ago. And, you know, there are many competent attorneys up here, but not in municipal law. Snowflake or Taylor, let's see, Taylor uses Bill Sims. Snowflake, their attorney is over in Albuquerque. But it's just hard to find somebody with, locally, that has municipal knowledge. And that is a huge key part of this. So, and that's why we haven't gone back out, because we haven't, nobody's ever identified- So, and that's why we haven't gone back out, because we haven't, nobody's ever identified somebody else up here that would be able to take that on seamlessly. So I would suggest that in three years, when this agreement comes up, we can put it back out to bid and they can apply for it again for them. So, because what you really are going after is their qualifications. So it would be a, not for their rate or anything like that, but you do a request for qualifications and then you'd find the best attorney in that.
When was the last time it went out to bid?
It, judging from this, it looks like 2015 was the first time that they awarded, according to what we have on the CDR. 14? Okay.
And, and at that point in time, we did have some local attorneys that bid on it or put in a RFQ. And the costs for local attorneys, their hourly rates and how it was all going to work out was going to be significantly more expensive than using. Which was interesting. Yeah, we did have some local attorneys.
And Mayor Irwin was on the council then when, when that was put out, so.
Counselor Watson would remember.
No, Jack. Yeah, he was always just a contract attorney. It was after I left and then they made a change and brought somebody in-house. And that was not Jack Barker. It was a lady, I believe.
Rosemary Rosales.
That's it.
One other thing to add is that, so Bill isn't operating by himself. He has other, there's other attorneys that have different fields of expertise municipal-wise. One could be, is land, another is the clerk issues, you know, the, the legal issues along that line. And so again, we're, we're getting a wider range of specialty use here, so.
Very good question.
Yeah, I can. I move to approve resolution number 21-1580, approving a three-year extension to the agreement for town attorney services with Sims, Macklin Limited and authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the town.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 21-1580. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Keith. Item D4 is consider the intergovernmental agreement, the IGA, between the Town of Pine Top Lakeside and Navajo County Magistrate Court. In Kevin's absence, we'll have Keith answer.
Okay, here we go. And Kevin, excuse him for not being here tonight. He had a family medical emergency and he had to suddenly leave. And so we have he and his family in our thoughts and prayers this evening. And I think Kevin may be listening in through Facebook right now. Let's see, so let me put my glasses on so I can remember what we're doing here. Okay, so this is for the, for the court magistrate court clerk. So we don't have, we have one employee, that's our appointed magistrate judge. Navajo County provides all the clerks for the JP Court and they also provide one for our magistrate court. That employee, that person is an employee of the county. They're not ours. And so we pay the costs of, of that employee. And so that means that if that position changes, that person changes, the contract means that they're going to provide an employee to, to take that position. And so there hadn't been, up until a couple of years ago, there had not been an increase in the agreement. And so we had a new agreement in 2019. We saw an increase. Now they, they're giving us the actual costs as of for right now. So it's increasing to $53,242. The agreement will continue on for, I believe, five years. And then there'll be increases that will happen at no greater than 3% per year. So again, it'll be the actual cost, but no greater than 3% per year.
Questions for Keith? Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure.
Watson.
I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with Navajo County for employment services through magistrate court clerk.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the IGA between the Town of Pine Top Lakeside and Navajo County Magistrate Court clerk. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Keith. Item D5 is consider resolution number 21-1581 and approving the purchase of a used Empire CAT 308 CR mini excavator with an 18-inch HD bucket, a 60-inch ditch bucket, an 18-inch wheel and hydraulic thumb. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll make it quick. We use a 308, we use a 305, they're excavators. I won't go into great detail on the machine, but typically our drainage projects, cleaning the road, the ditches, things like that. Over the years, we've realized that the 305 just doesn't quite have the power that we need to move the amount of dirt that we move. So we're going to, we're going to bump up to a little bit bigger machine and that's what this is about. We have a project starting in July. They're relocating the gas line on Woodland Lane. So we can finish the drainage there so that those inner houses quit flooding on that circle. And we'll need this, this machine for that project. However, if we keep renting, we're going to be paying the payment through the rental that we've done. So so far this year, we'll probably have already paid the payment by how much we've rented this machine. So I think it's a point that we move on and go ahead and purchase one ourselves.
But keeping the 305?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. They'll, they use that one quite a bit. So between them and parks, they'll use both of them, so.
Questions for Matt? Counselor Kugbaum.
So is this a used or a new?
Yeah, I think I might have messed that up. It's, I think it's actually a brand new excavator.
It looked like everything was new.
Yeah, it is. I'm pretty sure it is. For some reason, I mistyped that in there. I apologize.
On the first page, it just says used and then all of the rest of it is. So it's a new?
It's a new 208, yeah, or 308.
Whoever was reviewing this did not catch that.
I had.
Before I signed it.
Yeah.
That's okay.
I wrote it, so that makes it even worse, right?
I looked for typos mostly and that would have been one, so, oh, well.
Thank you for pointing that out, Counsel.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Matt? No? Okay, I'm ready for a motion now. Ms. Mayor?
I'll do that.
I move to adopt resolution number 21-1581, approving the purchase of an Empire CAT 308 CR mini excavator through Omnia Partners, contract number 161534, in an amount not to exceed $146,688.98, to be paid with annual payments that are subject to annual appropriation and authorize the town manager to execute, execute all documents necessary to complete this transaction.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 21-1581. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Matt? There being no business before us tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.